Okay, 7:02 will call this meeting to order. If we could, if we can stand for the pleasure of the leaders, I would appreciate it. Be a pretty short roll call tonight, I guess, Matt?
Ready? Haynes.
Here.
Fuller. Abbott.
Here.
Heaton.
Here.
Fender. Fender and Fuller are absent.
So, I see that the audience is here. Who do we have remotely?
I'm sorry.
So who we have for the audience?
I'm sorry. Remote, we have Gary Dear, we have Chris H., and Terry P. We also have Annette Smith, and we have Doug White.
So I have here the procedure for remote access. I am not going to read this word for word. I think we're all pretty familiar, and to me, the basic gist of it is, it's respectful. You know, if you want to speak, raise your hand in public comment, and try to limit the conversation to two or three minutes. And like I said, as long as we're respectful, welcoming public comments. You guys all good with that?
Yep.
Okay, now we're on to the agenda, and there are a couple of things that I think need to be put on to the agenda. Under the treasurer's report, discussion on the option for direct deposit for town employees, and also potentially the town to offer the option of electronic transfers for tax payments. That'll be under the treasurer's report. And then, under new business, an email came into the town, it also went to the town of Sundaland and Mount Tabor, looking for a non-binding referendum vote to close Courier School. So they'd have that under new business. So with those additions, is someone willing to make a motion on that?
We'll make the motion. We set the agenda as amended.
And I will second that.
Okay. Public comment. Yeah?
Yeah, Shelley talking tonight about the transfer?
Shelley is not here in general. She's going to report on anything. She would be here. So I see nothing, I see nothing from Shelley.
And when you talk about transfer station, will I be able to ask questions, or anybody else ask questions while you're giving your presentation?
I'm fine with, because, you know...
Question there?
But my only point is, on the discussion on transfer station, I'm not, you know, my thought process is going to be a brief discussion on what they've done so far, and I do not believe there's any decisions being made.
But if there's questions?
Hmm? Any other comments from the audience here? Matt, do we have anybody in the audience that liked this?
Anybody in the audience online would like to address the select board? We have Gary, Gary Dear. Go ahead, Gary. All right, now we have more. So I apologize, online folks, we had a computer fail, so I am getting a new one up and running here. So please give me a second. I cannot hear Gary. All right, Gary, go ahead, okay.
Can you hear Lynn and Gary?
Yes.
Great. So two things. One is, I was wondering on the Courier School piece, don't know the background, when you do discuss that, could we ask questions then?
Yes.
Thank you. And also, Annette Smith is trying to get through, and I'm not sure you can hear her. I just thought I'd let you know.
We just were able to connect back up with the microphone, so Annette can raise her hand, and we'll definitely let her through.
She's having a hard time figuring out how to raise her hand.
I just found it.
Okay.
Oh, we hear you loud and clear, so go ahead, Annette.
I'd like to know who's speaking. We missed the beginning of the meeting. It doesn't sound like Brad is running the meeting, so could you tell us who's there?
This is Greg Heaton, Annette. It's myself, Steve Haynes, and Ken Abbott.
Is Tom there?
No.
So it's three of you?
That's correct.
Would you all be willing to have the person running the Zoom turn the camera on so we could see you? That would be so much easier to follow what's going on.
We can also announce who's speaking right now, to make it easier tonight.
It may be awkward, because I don't have a remote camera, so you're only going to see my ugly face, and not the select boards.
Oh, I thought you had a camera. Well, I mean, we've asked this before, but we really, this is the least... So on the relocation of the transfer station, I am on the committee, and I don't know if you're going to let us speak during that agenda item. I also don't know if the Zoom's going to run out before it comes up. So I'll just say that my report on the committee is that there was one meeting, four of the six people showed up, and there did not seem to be anything that was decided, and for me, it raised a lot of questions, and we need to do more work. So thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I would just be interested to know, and I don't know if tonight is the night to talk about it, but at a previous meeting, there was mention of doing an audit. I would just love to understand what the status is on that.
So, there was a meeting previously, and you guys can speak up too if you'd like to, but we discussed it, and they reached out to an auditing firm, and they had felt that current state where we're at, where we were at back then, that we needed to get some things cleaned up, get the house in order, so to speak, a little better, before we pursued an actual audit. So we've been doing that, and that's what we're going to go talk about here from Caitlin, under the treasurer's report, to see, you know, where we're at. But the auditing firm we had used previously, they were contacted, looking what the situation was. Situation was, they didn't feel that it was a good time to have an audit at that time, but they just felt the house needed to be put in a little bit of order. That's my understanding. You guys feel free to...
They also said if we tried to do it then, it would cost a lot more money, because they would have to do a lot more legwork to figure out the mess that we're working through now. And at this point, we have NIMRIC working with Caitlin to get everything in order, and get everything brought up to current status, so that everything is where we need to be, and then we will move forward with having that done. There will be an independent audit, but it's, we have to be ready for it first, so we're not just wasting money.
Yeah, fair enough. Yeah. My concern is for the town, so if that means getting all our ducks in a row before, that's good.
Was there a timeframe, you know, two months, six months?
Maybe a little while.
It's not going to happen overnight.
No, it's not going to happen overnight, no. We have, at this point in time, we have contracted with NIMRIC for 96 hours of help with them at a reduced rate. So I believe their rate is $140 an hour, and because we contracted for an extended period of time, they reduced that rate to $110. So we're saving $30 an hour by contracting it, and the way it looks right now, we are going to be over the 100 hours easily before we get this straightened out.
Yeah, fair enough.
Any other comments?
Anyone online? Any additional questions? No hands are up, no one's tired.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item. You guys had a chance to look at the previous meeting's minutes.
I will make the motion. We adopt the minutes of July 10th.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, the next item is the local emergency management plan, which was submitted by Tom Johnston. It's a basic requirement. He said there were no changes from last year. It's a different form, and so we need to, if you guys are happy with it, we need to make a motion and sign that. When Tom returns, he cannot make it tonight, and he'll sign it upon his return, and that'll take care of our obligation for this year.
I'll make the motion. We sign it.
Yep, and I will second that.
Okay. Fine.
So, sign it right now before we forget.
Yep.
And then you won't feel like Brad doing it later.
Next item would be the report on the transfer station by Steve Haynes.
So the report on the transfer station, as Annette pointed out, we had one meeting. There were four of the six members present. The only thing that we really cemented was that nobody wants to put the transfer station on the west side, because roads are terrible in the spring. They're not much better in the wintertime. It's too close to a brook, and we just felt it was a bad place to have it. We came up with a half-hearted design of the way we think it should be, and I'm waiting on contractors to give me pricing so that we can hold another meeting and move forward. And that's it.
So I think originally it was 60 days. Obviously, we need more time.
I can't get numbers out of contractors, so I can't move forward until I have some numbers to work with.
No, so, you know, my question to you would be, what's a reasonable timeframe? We don't want it to drag off forever. What's a reasonable, what do you, a couple more months to try to have some information?
I would say two more months.
To bring something back to the board?
I would say two more months to, because right now, everybody's busy doing guaranteed work. It's hard to get different people to give me prices for, we might not do this. You know, I'm being upfront with them. I'm not saying, oh, we want to move forward on this until we know what we're doing.
Go ahead, Ken.
I was just wondering, where are your thoughts, if it's, you know, you said absolutely that the west side is not a good idea, which, I understand that. But where are you thinking?
We have discussed the property, the town loans, and the four corners.
Oh, by the fire?
Up by the firehouse, yep. There's water there, there's septic there, power's close, to where it would be an easy...
And to be fair to the public, it's right in the middle of town. For many years, people on the west side had to come down here. I understand that people down this way are going to have to go to the corners, but it is a central location.
Now, that's what I was going to say, right now, this is the very beginning, because it is a lot, you know, I believe when you're going to open up a transfer station, a new location, there's a lot more to it than just, just saying you want to. So I just want to make sure you understand that right now, that the task given to that group is to try to bring back information in, to the select board, so that decisions can be made, and then move to what might be the next step. You know, we have to have information, it's felt as best to have a, you know, the committee. So you're saying two months, is that enough?
I'm saying probably two months, so that we can get a handle on what it's going to cost, discuss whatever needs to be discussed after that. And then, if we even begin to think that we're going to move forward, at some point, we're going to have to have a permit from the solid waste district to be able to move up there, and I believe we're going to have to have an environmental hearing.
That's what I'm saying, it's a long...
It's going to be a long process, this...
But I'm looking for a timeline of when the committee, the reason we have information to bring back to the board, so we can start having other discussions.
I would think in October, we would be able to, I should have some numbers together, and should be able to have another meeting with the people on the committee.
You mean, we meet October 9th, or you push it into November 13th, are our two planned meetings? So whatever you feel is best for you guys, and you're getting information that we can use. I'm okay with, I mean, give you time, November 13th?
Sure.
Because October 9th is pretty quick.
Let's do November 13th.
All right, that sounds good.
And then I'll ask another question. I don't know if we need to make a motion to discuss it, or what, for that.
We're just talking about it, it's there?
Your report by November 13th, to the board.
Is there a document that the public could look at to see the assessment of the current situation, and the reasons for wanting to move it? Is there something that the public could look at?
Well, it'd be easier for you to come here during the wintertime, when I'm loading dump trucks and watch the people that are there. It's a safety hazard.
No, I heard the arguments. I guess I just like to read a case for, you know, I thought that the town would put forward a case statement for your rationale behind wanting to move it. I'm not saying it's a good idea or a bad idea, I'm just saying, is there something the town can look at?
Right now, I mean, the only thing I can say that's even remotely available, minutes from some of the other discussions, we'd look to move it to Mount Tabor, but as far as like an actual case study, I'm not aware of one, you know, and...
Is Mount Tabor still on the table?
No, no, no.
Why is Mount Tabor not on the table?
Conflicting attitudes.
Yep, that was at a previous meeting that was discussed.
Where else, what else is on the table? Just four corners?
Business as usual, four corners, or we close the whole thing down, and you hire your own garbage company to come and pick it up, or take it yourself. Those are the three options right now. And I don't care which one it is. I don't have a dog in the fight.
Yeah, yeah. Are we going to open up for a discussion at all? We get together as a commission. You're going to go, basically, I want to talk to the people at the nursery school, that's about it. That's the only thing that worries me.
So, but the only thing is, I don't want to make this a meeting about the transfer station.
Dangerous spot when those kids are coming in and out.
Right, but I think that's something you guys discuss in your committee, and that's what gets brought back to us, those concerns. That's what I would think. Part of what you put in writing to the board?
Yeah, that's all.
We have Gary Dear.
Yeah.
Gary, go ahead.
Actually, it's Lynn, Lynn and Gary.
Thanks, Lynn.
I was just wondering, what is the process to engage those local businesses, the daycare and the riding, in the process, so that their needs can be met as well? I mean, it's a great central location, but, you know, how do you make it work for everybody, and what's the process to engage them and find out, you know, what their needs would be, so that, you know, it could work?
Well, my personal opinion right now, and this is Greg, is right now, all they're doing is gathering information, and if it turns out the site's not even feasible for it, I can't see getting too far ahead. We don't really have, we're in the very, very beginning stages.
Oh, I see. Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to the next item, which would be a motion to sign state grant for road work. It's a municipal grant. It's an amount of $24,000. We have to match $6,000, and the work we completed by September of 2026. It's for any portion of our roads, as you know, Steve, that aren't up to our, aren't up to the state standards, so...
Specifically, it's for the hydroically connected roads.
Correct.
Ditches.
Yeah.
Now make the motion that we sign it.
Um, are you're all set to be able to make that deadline on that, Steve?
This is one of these projects that if we don't do it, we don't get the money. They don't give us money. We, basically, I have to fill out a form, have them come down and approve the work that I want to do.
Okay.
Do the work, take pictures, wait for them to come back, say, yes, you did it up to standards. Then they cut us a check off of the bill I give them, and then two years down the line, she's got to prove that we've spent the money on, we just went through this on the last two grants I did, and it's...
I understand you, you're not obligated, but you're setting yourself so you can have that money available.
Right. We signed it last year, and so far, we haven't gotten to any projects.
Okay, well, I will second it, and see if we can make it work.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Matt, did you hear who's seconding?
Oh, I missed, I missed who made the motion, and who seconded it. Was it?
I made the motion.
Steve motioned, and Ken seconded.
And seconded.
Sorry, I thought my mouth was big enough tonight that you'd know. More Mountain Dew.
Less.
More.
You should do this one too, before I forget. Next item is discussing proposal for new town clerk computer. That was pre today's episode.
So it was online, I tried to give the one I was using away, because it doesn't boot anymore. Anyway.
So, what they're saying is the computer, basically, like a lot of computers, getting to the point where it's obsolete, it's antiquated, there's not a real good sound system working, there's no microphone, making challenging on Zoom meetings, and different things, and so on. They've submitted a proposal for what they're looking for, and with the different, with the computer, different accessories, it's around $1,146.69. How do you like that? So, you know, my questions are, the need, is it an immediate need? It sounds like the equipment's very old, which you all can deal with after so many years. They're asking for it, and another question I have is, where it comes from, the dollars. Do you have an equipment reserve fund?
No, that's mine, that's not theirs.
There's an office, equipment reserve there for you?
There's an office. I'm your administrator.
What is page two?
It should be like computer, software support.
Page two. So, you know, they've committed...
So is the money in there to cover this?
It's $1,500?
$1,500 in the reserve.
And I did ask...
There's $1,500 in this year, and we only used
Right.
$1,300 from last year.
I will make a motion to purchase a new computer for for the clerks.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you get that?
Yes, I did. Thank you very much.
Okay. Pointing at your report, I have nothing from Shelley, she's not here, so we'll move past that. Right now, I'm looking for a motion to accept the resignation of Matt Bluen from the Arda position, effective July 16th, 2025.
I'll make the motion that we don't accept it, make him continue on.
Seconded.
I'll second that.
I'll third that.
All right, in all seriousness, I make the motion, we accept Matt's resignation, disappointedly.
Yep.
As I've said to Caitlin, when, and Brad, when things get caught up, and the time is well spent, then I'm willing to step back up, but I can't be leaving a brand-new job.
Mm-hmm. I understand.
When the time isn't being...
Not to interrupt, we did make the motion, we should vote on that motion.
I will second that, and...
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So anyways, not to interrupt you, Matt, but I wanted to make sure we actually vote on it, and don't forget it, and so it's not, but I understand, and...
Or if we forget it, if he doesn't get out...
I know, but he, he made his decision, hopefully he'll...
So I missed who...
I made it, I made it. Ken seconded it.
Yeah, thank you.
We all accepted it.
Thanks for your work, Matt, and certainly, you'd appreciate all the work you did.
I wish it could have continued, but Caitlin's working hard, and she'll get this caught up at some point. There's a lot to be done, so...
So we'll move on to the treasurer's report. Caitlin?
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Caitlin Parker. I'm the new treasurer here. There was only a few things I wanted to mention. I know Greg already mentioned the possibility of direct deposit for the employees, and direct debit, which is for the tax payments. If people want to opt in the direct debit, we can stuff in a paper on how to do that with the tax bills this year. So it'll come right out of your banking account, instead of having to come and write a check or bring cash. There was one other thing I wanted to ask you, Greg. I spoke with Darlene from NIMRIC today. She was talking, I'm trying to straighten out the HRA business for the employees, and she mentioned, in some other towns, they have a separate checking account for the HRAs, so it's still connected to our town account. It's just a little separate, so that way, the money only comes out of the HRA account. I don't know if that's something that you guys are interested in, but it might make it a little easier.
What would be the benefit of that? Would that be automatic payment out of that checking account?
Yeah, so basically, I would just make sure that there's money in the account, and we wouldn't have to go through what we're going through now, with having to redo everything.
They would just withdraw every month?
Withdraw out of the account when there's a submission of a claim.
And that would keep them separate from our general?
Yes.
That would be easier to follow, then?
I think so, and Darlene thinks so.
Well, I'll make the motion, allow you to do that, if that's what you feel is the best approach.
Can I ask you what that is? The HRAs? It's a reimbursement account, so some of the employees have, if they have like medical bills, they can submit a claim, and they get reimbursed for that, up to a certain amount.
So with that said, changing that, I hear the union, ma'am, there's no issue with the contract to change that, doing it to change like that?
That has nothing to do with the union, that's all financial part, which is her.
Yeah.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that will also affect the rest of the employees that are not union, like Janice, because she's, has HRA?
Yeah, I believe there's only four, so it should be Steve, Bovee, Cliffy, and Janice. Uh, the other thing that was mentioned was getting a check scanner. It's just a little device, like at the banks, at the teller machines, where they scan the checks in, and it can deposit straight to our account. So during tax season, when we're getting a bunch of checks every day, we can just scan it here in the office, and it goes right into the account, and it might save trips to the bank, it might save confusion or lost checks, because they'll be scanned right here, right now. Um, they, the bank seems to think that they're anywhere between $700 to $1,200, depending on what you purchase. Um, it would be a separate purchase, so you wouldn't purchase it from the bank, but, and they would not be responsible for upkeep or replacing it. It would be something that we purchase here, but it would link to our banking account.
I guess, I guess for me, I guess I'm looking for more information to see. I understand the thought behind it, but $700, $1,200 is, once again, not, obviously it's not worth it right now, but we've had some definite, to me, some definite budget things we're doing with already this year, and I guess I'd like to see more about what that's, the cost, but ongoing, is there support needed for it all, and what, you know, is there different, different brands, you know, I just...
Yep, there's different brands. I don't know a ton about it. Steve from the bank was talking about it a little bit. I can get some more information, though.
I would like to see a little more information... I, I would like to see a little more information before I, that's me.
Yeah, and what's, what's our roughly cost of paying to go to the bank?
That I'm not, I don't know the overall amount, but it mile, you get mileage and mileage is, this year I believe is seventy cents a mile. And I haven't gone through a tax season yet, so I don't know how often I'm going to be going to the bank, but I.
I'm just trying to balance out the cost of going to the bank or being able to do it right here.
Well, the one benefit that I see to it is if you do it right here, there's no chance that you're going to lose a check between here and there.
Right.
And it's, I do, I, I'm not opposed to it. I just want to kind of understand the full piece before we.
Well, I think we should have more information before we jump on it, definitely.
But I, I think it's definitely worth looking into.
Yeah, and get more information. Do you want more information on what it does and how much?
Yeah, what does, how much, you know, what are the options, you know, and you know, if we put out twelve hundred dollars, you say we're not, you know, we're responsible for maintaining it, updating it, you know, these things, they're usually good for five years. I know nothing about it.
Can I ask you at the bank? Give some research.
With that piece, I think before we move on to the other options, the thing, the items we added to the agenda, I'd like to go over the setting the tax rates, we can get that. That's probably the most important thing we're doing tonight, I think, no fancy anything else, but so. With the information that I have received and gone through, from what I see, this is unseen for municipal rate and the local agreement rate right here. Municipal rate is point four, five, seven, two, so approximately, you know, forty-six cents. The local is point zero, zero, one, six, so.
You just repeat that to make sure.
Yeah, so municipal rate, point four, five, seven, two. The local agreement, point zero, zero, one, six. So previous, just for, I guess comparisons, two thousand twenty-four, municipal was point four, four, zero, seven. Local agreement was point zero, zero, two, one. So municipal is a slight increase. The local agreement is a slight decrease.
Looks like it's pretty much wash.
It's very close. Municipal, local, you know, based on the March vote, the taxable and for the grants and the grant list.
We need to set it at that number then.
That's, those are the numbers we need.
Yep.
Right there. Sorry.
I will make a motion to set it at the four, five, seven, two, and zero, zero, one, six.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then on the items we added to the agenda for the, under the treasury report, about the discussion to offer the option for employees to have direct deposit. You have some thoughts on that too?
Uh, no, not really. I mean, Collette mentioned that it would be nice to have. Janice mentioned it'd be nice to have. I don't think Bovee's quite a fan. But then it would go right into their banking accounts. They wouldn't have to write checks. I wouldn't have to write checks, which I don't mind. There's no charge to the town at all for that. More just a employee preference.
Obviously it'd be an option.
And you don't have to go all in or all out. Some people could have direct deposits. Some people could have paper checks.
Right. It's, it's not all or nothing. It's
Does that make that more confusing by not doing all in or all out?
No, as long as I know who's, who wants what. I don't know how it works yet because we haven't gone through it. It was just something that NIMRIC had mentioned, offering.
Because, you know, to me, once again, if it becomes something offered, to me, you don't want, they can't be opting in and out of it on a rate. There's going to be some kind of parameters. If you opt, to me, if you opt in for direct deposit, it can't be weekly. They changed their mind and want a check.
It may be that easy. I honestly, I'm not sure. I can talk to the bank about it. It was just something that Darlene had mentioned offering, because a lot of places are going to direct deposit now.
Right.
So she thought maybe that would be a nice option for some of the employees that might want it.
Once again, I don't think it's a bad option. In most places, or a lot of places offer direct deposit.
Right.
You know, obviously I want it to be optional. I also want to know what's involved. And once again, what's involved in setting it up? Any, any costs incurred by the town?
Nope, no cost.
Are we going to set, are we going to set parameters or is it going to be, they, literally week to week, they can?
No, it should, I, I believe there would be parameters. I don't think they can flip flop like that. I mean, they can, I'm sure, but would not be optimal.
Well, I think before that you offer it with the select board's blessing, you should just write it in there that once you opt into it, you're into it for a year. If you want it, you're in it for a year. If you want to back out, well, here you are.
At work we have it and everybody that has that direct deposit, they vote, they don't want to go back to you.
Yeah.
I prefer to get my check on Friday. Go to the bank, go see my dad. That or not, that's mine, but. Yeah, I mean, people live in Poland. They don't want to go all the way to Roble to cash a check.
My personal feeling is I think the direct deposit's great.
I'm all for the option.
Right. My question would be who's. I know, I know. So who, who's going to set, who wants to set the parameters? Are you going to set the parameters? Are we going to set the parameters? You know, we just vote yes to do it, you know?
I can set parameters.
I will make the motion that we offer direct deposit to the employees under the parameters that Caitlin Parker, our new treasurer, sets.
I'll second that.
Careful what you sign up for.
It's a little low. Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Another one down. Okay, the second item. Matt, did you get that?
I did. Yes, thank you.
Sorry, well, I keep wondering. The next one would be the option of the electronic transfer for tax payments. I think that one's got a little more involved. But I did do a little bit when I saw this from you. I did look a little bit. There are towns, multiple towns in the state that do offer. This in various forms. It looked like there was a large variety of how they do it. So I guess once again, not to be, but I'd, I'd want to know more about which type we're looking into, the cost and different things, but exactly, close to us, Paulette has it, the middle town, Springs has it.
There's no charge for it?
Town. But I just, like I said, there's, when I looked, there's several different ways. They're all doing it different, so I just want to see what, once again, what, what are you, what's, what are you looking at for the town? Because some had direct, some had debit, you know, debit, some had credit card payments, some had.
So this would be coming right out of their banking account rather than a credit card. So we would stuff a little brochure inside the tax bills when we send them out with a how-to on how to sign up for it to connect it to their bank.
Hey, sorry, but could you say that again?
So from what I understand from Darlene from NIMRIC, she just mentioned that it would be a direct debit from their checking or savings account, whichever account they set up. But we would stuff a little informational sheet in the tax bills when we send them out on how to sign up for that and how to link their banking account with their tax, for their tax payments.
How difficult is it to set up? I mean, like.
I honestly, I don't know yet.
So I mean, I, I was, once again, I'm not, I'm, I'm not opposed to it. I just want to make sure that I understand what's.
With Darlene's help, I don't think it will be very, very much. I think she's very knowledgeable and knows the system well. She's been a treasurer before, so she kind of knows all the ins and outs of everything, but.
It's going to be easy to follow as being.
Oh, yeah.
See, I don't know if we want to vote on this quite yet. I, once again, I kind of like to make sure we totally understand how it play, what we're doing, how it plays out and, and I know you want to try to do it. I know you're trying to use it, utilize it, but now let Steve chime in too, but he's saying that there's no cost to the town.
Darlene said there would be no charge to the town for that option.
Security, like issues with, any security issues with people doing something like?
By knowledge.
Right, but I, I think that's, I mean, you know, this is a system that we're setting up that's used by other towns around us that I can check with or we can to see.
Yeah, I can ask Darlene about it.
Because I, when I looked on my, you know, I just saw many, many different varieties of what towns are offering. If other towns are using the same thing, it might be worth, you know, might please reach out and ask how it's going or something, but if that's, I just want to make sure that we do something like that because that is, that to me is a somewhat significant change.
Yeah.
And I know it's still optional. I know it's not, you know, mandatory.
Right.
Does that open our account to possible fraud?
I can ask those questions though.
You know, security to me is one of the bigger issues. It's more, you know, setting up cost of town, security, you know, if those questions are, answers more. Another option for people to help them make it easier for the residents to pay their bills. I'm all for it, to pay the tax bill.
So a side thought here, if there is a question of security, would this be, would it be worth our time to look into setting up an account like you were talking about for the HRA for this to where they could, we could deposit into an account without it being a million-dollar account? That way it would only be whatever's being direct deposited.
I can ask her about that.
That just might make it a little safer. That way if, if for some reason there is a security issue, it would sidestep it.
She is going to be out of the office for the next, she'll, she'll be in Monday, but she'll be out the rest of that week. And she's coming back here on the third, so it may be a little bit before I can ask her, but I, I can even send her an email. So that way I get a quicker response maybe.
And I'd like to see, I, I just want to look into more before I, before I become comfortable.
Yeah, I agree.
The item was a suggestion again to look into a fall dump day since we canceled the summer dump day. And my thoughts on that are, we couldn't find people to work. The first one we canceled it after we advertised it. I would not be in favor of advertising another dump day if we don't have people lined up to work it.
I agree.
So if anybody's come up with a list of folks to work it, then I'd happily, happily maintain setting another dump day account, but I don't see anybody, any volunteers?
Have you found any tires or trash on the side of the road?
More than usual.
Not more than usual, no.
Okay, because I was just curious how the cancellation of the dump day, you know.
And typically, the, the bulk of the tires that we find side the road is green up day. And I probably shouldn't say this, but I'm gonna. It's the arrogance of some people that don't want to pay to get rid of their tires, that I've seen them literally carry them across the road from their house and stack them. I mean, it's pretty obvious when the tires are only half worn out and they're directly across from the car that has the exact same tires on it, but. That's just me being me.
What's required of the volunteers? What's the job description?
Well, there's a couple of different positions.
We need somebody to set prices and take money. And somebody to help unload heavy items and get them into a dumpster. Last year, we had one young fellow sat in the excavator to load freezers and whatnot into, but he wasn't available this year and we didn't have anybody to even collect money this year, so.
Well, I can do that part as long as I know what date we're doing it.
Well, you have one volunteer.
So I, I heard, I don't mean to throw anyone under the bus if they renege, but I think Lana had suggested she would, Burton would do it. Because she was upset that dump day was canceled.
The last I understood for the me, for the dump day we canceled, Lana had previous engagement to where she couldn't make that day. But I can't speak for her. I could be wrong. That's just what I heard.
So the person that, I mean, you're going to need one of the town guys or somebody to run the piece of equipment, correct? I mean, you can't just have any Tom, Dick, and Harry jumping into that and do whatever you got to do, correct?
Depending on when it is, I can do an excavator. I just don't know when, depending on when it is in the fall.
Yeah, well, my question would be, once again, if we have someone, I mean, not a town employee, the town equipment, if something happens, who are we after that?
Everybody that works dump day has to sign a agreement that they're not going to hold the town liable for whatever.
Well, yeah, but most of other, other people. I, I guess my point, we, we didn't, we weren't very successful here in the summer. We put out, we had a date, we looked for help, we weren't successful. And kind of my, I mean, I know maybe not popular, but start fresh next year and get people lined up, set a date, get people lined up and have it done.
Right, but most people that are going to have something, it's going to either run it to stores that are running too. If they're not going to throw it on the side of the road.
I personally am not in favor of trying to stuff this thing through this fall. That's my opinion.
I will make the motion that we will table this discussion.
Okay, well.
I'll second that for more information, for more input, I guess.
Are you going to pass it unanimously?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yes.
Sorry. Appreciate that. I'm trying to do mine.
Doing a great job.
All right. So we're good with that. And we're back on to the road commissioners' report. And we have, first I remember that was the employment application. Steve?
I don't have the application. You do. I haven't seen it yet. I haven't been allowed to see it.
Well, not by Mike.
Well, Kenny wants to look at it?
Yep. Thoughts?
Well, I've talked with Riley. I haven't, we have not conducted an interview per se, but I discussed this with him. He asked me about mowing road sides. He is currently self-employed, and there's times that he has free time that he would like to be able to fill with side work. And he asked about specifically the roadside. And I asked him if he'd be interested in running dump truck part-time if the roads were caught up or if we really needed a driver, and he said he would be interested in that. It would only be, like I said, fill-in work for him, so it might be a day this week, nothing next week, could be two days the following week. I don't know his specific work schedule, and I'm not sure as he does, week to week.
Right. But, right now, we are short of help.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm pretty sure any help we can use was just mowing.
And Riley is certainly qualified to run the mower and drive truck.
Yes.
He used to, he had, I believe he's a current Class A CDL holder, and he used to drive for the state of Vermont and for Johnny White.
Do you want to bring him in to set up something to talk to him quickly? Or do you want to just make a decision?
Personally, I would rather just make the decision tonight to bring him on as an on-call employee, starting him on roadside mowing and no truck driving until he passes a drug test.
I'm good with that. I will, I, I think it's a great idea.
Well, I'm in favor of getting anybody that can help, because, no, not to be, I just don't think we're...
I know, I'm not doing enough work to satisfy you.
No, that's not, that's not what I said. Alright, so, have a motion then to, uh, offer to Riley Lewis the on-call position?
I will second that.
I made the motion.
After those, could, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maybe I didn't quite word it right, but... As far as current projects, uh, since our last meeting, Larry and I have continued ditching with the grader and the payloader, and we have done Scottsville Road, probably a third of Baker Brook. And then we had to jump on Raymond Road because of washouts. We've got one half-day left to do on Raymond Road where we need the excavator, so it's gonna be slower. And we got, we started up on Staples Road yesterday. Today, we had to switch the grader over to the carbides, because Calvin Hill was starting to wash bad on the back, and we needed to fix that. So at this point, we might have to pull out of doing ditching for a couple of days. Just while we've got the carbides on the grader, fix some of these roads that are starting to wash. And then we will be back to pulling ditches.
So obviously, it won't hurt to have another hand mowing, while you guys can keep focusing on that then, if I understand it right.
Well, the way we're doing it, uh, the roads that we've worked on, you don't have to worry about mowing that first pass, because it's going in the back of my dump truck and leaving it.
Well, the only item I have left on that road, the road report, is just a discussion of the, uh, loaning of equipment and personnel to Pollard.
And they have completed that project.
Good.
The, the reason he had asked if we could help was because where they were digging, it was kind of unsafe to do with tobacco, and they were trying to hurry up and get that project done. My understanding was so that they could have black topping done. And he was just looking for it to be a little safer and faster, and was looking to trade hours for it.
I get it, but we're not, we're keeping up, no, I don't think I'm not attacking your work ethic.
Right.
We're not, we're not making...
I understand that. I understand the safety issue that they had, and they were also offering me eighty hours of work for a hundred and twenty hours of work. Which, if I could have had their three dump trucks hauling sand for a hundred and twenty hours, then we could have had four trucks running constantly, and me just sitting in a payloader piling it, I think would have sped us up on that.
Well...
But it's in the past.
Just for about now, so we can move on from that.
Yep.
Which is good, so then we can move on to the, what I can see is the last item, which is that, the request for the non-binding referendum vote to close Courier. And all I can say, all that I know of, is there was an email from the BRSU that came to the town of Sundaland, the town of Danby, and the town of Mount Tabor, looking for the three towns to have a, like I said, you know, non-binding referendum vote. Ours is obviously the closed Courier School, same with Mount Tabor. And they're looking for the date to be the same for the three towns, and they were suggesting, looking for October 28th. I also understand, you know, obviously require, you know, a special vote, that they were going to, the BRSU was gonna pick up the cost of that, so that burden wasn't on, you know, the actual town, it's all the taxpayer money, of course, but... So, that's the only information. It wasn't, from what I saw, there was not much else provided, other than they're looking for the towns to, whether it wouldn't, because they want to do it all the same day. And obviously, I think we all know it has to do with all this restructuring and all this stuff, and they're looking for, I guess, to me, what it looks like is they're looking for the opinion of the towns to vote, so they have information as the state does their restructuring and redistricting, all the stuff that they passed into law.
Is the public allowed to ask questions on this?
I'm, I'm more than happy.
It's new business that was added at the beginning of the meeting, so yes, the public can...
So, my, my question is, if, if the school was closed, who has to maintain the building, since it's in the foundation?
I believe it goes back to the town.
And we could do with it as we wish.
Turn it into a new town garage.
First of all, like I said...
The transfer station.
Transfer station!
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
You're welcome.
But once again, this is a non-binding, this is not committing...
I understand.
And it's simply, to me, it's, it's information, finding information, views of town. My understanding is, if that school was to be closed, the town has the right...
To purchase it for one dollar, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
And while we're on that, and we can take more comment, my thought is too, because it's obviously fairly serious. Things are happening pretty quick, and, and I would even like to see something brought possibly to the planning commission to start looking at what could happen to that property, because I hate to be in a position of the town when that stuff comes down quick, and we're in possession of a, of a building that we have to now, if we're gonna keep it, we have to maintain it. That's not a, it's not a small piece of property. It's not a small building, and, uh, you know, since the state's moving at a pretty rapid rate, and, uh... Ye- yes.
So they, they sent an email, and they want you guys to vote on whether...
They want the town.
They want a special...
They want you to do a vote in town. Oh, is that right?
Yes, they're out, yes, because the town has to hold that, my understanding. We have to hold that special vote.
Alright, so you guys just have to agree to have this town vote?
Yep.
Correct, and then, you know, then they want to have, like I said, once again, they, the email, they asked, they're trying to do the three towns voting on the same day. So the emails went to the town clerks of all three towns. There wasn't, I mean, there wasn't a lot there.
And, and we're gonna be voting on whether we want to close the school? No.
Yeah, that's a pretty simple, check the box, no, and we're done.
Non-binding vote is to see if voters will close Courier School. It's not, I mean, it's nothing, and I, obviously, I don't have this, there is not a...
So basically, we're gonna vote, but they can do what they want anyway, because...
It's, it's a non-binding, so it's, it's basically, it's, it's voting, and then they say, I mean, I'm speculating, but nine percent of the town of Danby says we don't want to close. I'm assuming the BRSU is gonna use the information, and however the state is bringing, you know, I don't think, I mean, understands exactly how it's happening and what's happening.
So I've seen this in other places in other states, where your three towns vote, and then two vote for it, and one votes against, guess who loses?
Yeah, this is, it is non-binding.
Okay, I'm just...
It's a non-binding vote, so this is, this is not committing the town to any action that's...
Just basically for their information.
Well, non-binding is, non-binding is, non-binding. It does not hold the town, is not, we're not held to our vote. It's just a, it's a, and then, once again, feel free to, but I have not, they did not send like a, you know, and, you know, once again...
Very little information there to vote.
Right, and I think, and it's, right, and I'm, I'm, once again, I'm A-OK with the select board saying, or, or saying we need some more information before we commit to anything, because that's, once again, Greg's opinion, but there should be something more behind that, asking the towns and in, to set up a special...
I personally feel that if we're going to ask the town to vote on this, we need a little more information on what they're voting on.
Correct.
And the consequences of it.
And what's gonna be done with it. Steve?
I'll make the motion that we table this until we have more information.
I was asking for comment from you, if you had something to say about it.
What do I need to comment for? You guys have got this covered.
Well, and this, I don't think we have to, see, to me, I'm not sure we have to motion. We can just, we're just discussing. It's a new business item, but you think we have to table it?
So there will be a day to vote for all three towns, and the goal is to have all three towns vote on this one thing on the same day?
That's their goal. That way they can get all of the answers at the same time, but the information they gave us, I don't know what they've told other towns, or why they want to close the school, or what's gonna happen to the kids that are in Danby. How far are they gonna have to go before they get... Right. I mean, I would hate to put my kid on a bus for three hours, every day. It's ridiculous.
Yeah, right, but I think, once again, I think we'll clarify it, but it needs to be clarified, and need to provide more information, to me, before we agree with it, but just my knowledge of non-binding, we're not committing anything. The town is not, and, but I still think they should disclose more information on what this is a...
Does the town, they must, the town must have a contact at the BRSU?
Well, yeah, I mean, it was the, I think what the title was. It's the administrative assistant for the superintendent that sent the email out.
So wondering if a case could be made in order to assist the public to fully understand what they're voting on, like, if the town or someone can help, again, just create something that goes on the website, say, this is what we're voting on, this is, this is, might be the impact, I don't know.
Right, well, I think we have, we have to get, like I said, that's why we're discussing this, because that's what we got from information. I think we're all in agreement. We, the board, and the town, we're gonna reach out to, and get more information to, I mean, there's nothing to really, it's hard to make any decisions, just say we want to vote, and you don't know what's behind it. That's a very, so that's my take, and, uh...
So we had a motion to table.
Yeah, I mean, I say a motion, wait to have amended a motion to table, and the select board to, clarify with BRSU and get some more information out of them.
Motion to clarify?
Well, this is where I'm...
A motion to table?
Table, you're moving, you're just moving it off this agenda.
We're moving it off until we can get more information.
So we, make a motion to table, we'll second that, and we'll go on.
Motion to table, it is.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, and the select board is gonna reach out, clarification, to that sort of building. If they don't find information, it's gonna be pretty easy, just in my mind, if they're not gonna provide information, then...
Well, my only concern is, it's a non-binding vote, so if we say no, we want to keep school open, are they gonna say, well, it's non-binding, so sucks to suck?
I come down to it, this is passive, and we come down, and the state's moving forward, and we're gonna have, we're gonna work certain things, and we're gonna...
We're gonna take it one way or the other.
We're gonna get railroaded.
But we at least ought to know the reasons behind it.
Yes. Oh, okay. How about the last item? What a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.